Good evening. Sorry we're a little bit late this evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, August 13th. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And the second item is the invocation by Pastor Steve Holdaway, Life Spring Church, 13904, South 36th Street. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? Oh, Lord, we bow before you. We take just a moment, not out of mere formality, but out of necessity. We need your wisdom. We need your guidance, Father. We need the counsel of your principles and your precepts and your commands to rightly govern this city. Father, we acknowledge our need for you. We acknowledge the need for justice and mercy in our city. And we thank you for the growth that we've seen. Father, we pray your continued hand of blessing.
God, I thank you for these servants before me. Thank you for their dedicated sacrificial service. God, I pray that you'd bless them with wisdom and discernment on these matters that will be before them. And, God, we want to honor you. Thank you for this privilege, in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Holdaway. Third item, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Modri?
Here.
Item four, Open Meetings Act, is posted in the entry to the council chamber. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda minutes, and advisory committee reports.
Item 5A is the approval of the agenda.
Anna Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shannon.
No, that's for you. Mayor, I would declare an emergency and move that we amend the agenda, adding in Mr. Modri's motion to reconsider that was submitted and not included in our agenda.
Mr. Sullivan.
I don't have it specifically in front of me, but I'm not sure how that rises to the level of an emergency.
Because the motion to reconsider can only be taken at this council meeting.
No, that's into Act 93 of the code. Additionally, I don't believe that rises to the level of emergency, but give me a minute to look it up and I'll see what I can do.
All right. If we can bring it up next council meeting, I'm fine with that. But I don't want it cut off because it wasn't included in the agenda.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, it's 2-92... Oh, no, 2-93, reconsideration of council action. A motion to reconsider the action taken by the council may be done only on the day such action was taken in the next regularly scheduled meeting. Such motion to reconsider may be made only by one of the councilmen who voted with the prevailing side. Nothing herein shall be construed to prevent any councilman from making or remaking the same motion or any other motion at a subsequent meeting of the council.
So subsequent, we can take it up next meeting?
Yeah, I think the only problem that you run into is I don't know if a contract's been signed because it was approved last week. And an emergency nature is something that happened two hours ago. That vote happened a week ago. The motion to reconsider could have been put on the agenda for the last week, so I really don't think it rises to the level of an emergency.
Well, it was submitted on Friday.
A flood might be an emergency or some other issue, but simply voting to reconsider something that has been available to put back onto the agenda for the last week doesn't rise to the level of emergency. But let me see what I can find under the public meetings law. You can always call a special meeting by the vote by the... by the mayor, or I believe it's... Is it four?
Four council members.
I believe it's four council members. You could call a special meeting for those purposes. But I just don't see how this rises to the level of an emergency.
According to Statute 841411, anything submitted to the city 48 hours before the scheduled meeting should have been included in the agenda.
No, what it's saying is, is under the Open Meetings Act, that you cannot alter it within 24 hours unless it's an emergency nature. We have our separate, own council rules of when an item shall be submitted for a meeting.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Are there any other discussion? Mr. Preister.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion or questions? Sina, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 5B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or the mayor requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda, in which case it'll be placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 5B1 is approval of the minutes from the July 23, 2018, city council meeting and the August 6, 2018, special city council meeting. Item 5B2 is the acknowledgement receipt of the minutes from the July 26, 2018, planning commission. And item 5B3 is approval of claims. Mayor and city council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Burns?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? Sina, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item six, special presentation.
Item 6A is Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation's Second Quarter Update, presented by Josh Sharbot.
Welcome.
Thank you. Andrew's out on a training conference all week, so I'll kind of take in charge this week, so wait for those to get passed around a little bit. But it's been a busy second quarter. We have a couple of big projects that hopefully we'll get to a point that they're ready to kind of go through and we can hopefully announce. So as soon as we can announce something, we'll be excited to announce. But kind of looking back at the second quarter, last quarter Bellevue, the first quarter, they had about $80 million. This quarter, $31, so down a little bit, but still a strong quarter, kind of in our books. Forming a little bit, not as well as you did second quarter of 2017, but nothing that we think should be of alarm. Kind of the big thing that we're looking at this quarter was the single housing family permits. We actually permitted over almost 50 more than we did at this point last year, so that's something we're very excited about. Big issue is workforce and housing definitely is one of those components. So the more housing we can get out there and anything from workforce to, you know, kind of those upper range levels, we're always excited to see. Kind of building on that is the multifamily housing permits. Aside from La Vista, it was a pretty quiet quarter for the second quarter. They had a big project that was permitted in their city center, so that kind of helped bolster the numbers. But it seems that La Vista and Bellevue kind of seem to carry the multifamily housing permits. And we always enjoy seeing that too because that's another big component for workforce housing. Speaking of workforce, the labor force statistics, as you can see, kind of the one positive, even though we always hear that workers are manufacturers, nurses, bankers, everyone needs more workers, is that there has been a continued increase in the labor force. That's at the bottom there. So we hope to see that continue and hopefully that we can kind of relieve some of the pressure that is on a lot of these businesses we talk to. One of the positive things that does come out of that, though, is however, we are seeing a lot of wage increases kind of across the board. We've had employers talk about, you know, raising every wage at least $1.25 to, you know, we see signing bonuses for C E L truckers all the time. So just kind of finding that right balance where, you know, higher wages brings more workers in but doesn't cut too far into those businesses' bottom line. So we'll continue to monitor that. I'll kind of switch over now to this progress report. You can kind of take a look at the other numbers at your leisure. We did land one project that was the Merck facility expansion. So they had a $3.7 million expansion. That was for 77,000 square feet. That's warehouse space. And so that's, they've been kind of pretty full. They're over south of Giles, kind of around the 132nd industrial area. So that was exciting. That project opened in 2017. Capital investment continues to kind of hit that out of the ballpark with a lot of the big, you know, data center projects we're seeing. So that kind of skews that. But we're really excited to see those. And I think those are really exciting numbers. Looking at the project pipeline, we are seeing a lot of manufacturers in back office. So I think one thing we were a little bit surprised is to see the amount of manufacturers that are looking for, you know, to expand their projects from out of market. And those are everything from small manufacturers to technology manufacturers and then some larger rail served manufacturers. So we continue to market the Bellevue site for rail served and it continues to be shortlisted, but we haven't gotten that finalist position yet. But kind of in regards to that, we did finally submit the Bellevue site for Go Ready certification, so that should open it up to some more marketing opportunities and as well as some more resources. So that'll continue to be top of mind for us. Looking at business interactions, I was able to get out a lot more this quarter. Talking to businesses, the big issue is, I mentioned, workforce. You know, I think all the other standard issues are still there, but, you know, once we talk about workforce, that's really all that the conversation goes from that point out. So working to connect folks with groups like Heartland Workforce Solutions, Metro Community College, Bellevue University, anywhere that we can find a solution that might work for them, we're going to try and do that. So that's kind of a big overview of what we did. Other things that came through is we continue kind of on that Highway 50 corridor to look for some solutions for the data center interest we see. So we're kind of trying to ride that market out and make sure we don't kind of cut ourselves off from all the interest investment we see there. So doing kind of a land use planning for the infrastructure investments as well as what kind of for the blowdown that those data centers create. So we'll continue to do that and work on that. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Shavat, I want to thank you for coming down and giving the update directly to the council. Are there any questions for Mr. Shavat? No questions, but thank you for the written information that we can review. Thank you. Item number seven, liquor license, none. Item eight, ordinance for adoption, third reading, none. Ordinance for public hearing, second reading, none. Item 10, ordinance for introduction, first reading.
Item 10A is ordinance number 3908, amending Section 2-30 of the Bellevue Municipal Code concerning the Order of Business. This item will have a public hearing at the next meeting on August 27. Item 10B, ordinance number 3909.
Mr. Modri.
If I can, I just want to comment on 10A. The ordinance that was released to the public and put out there is not the correct ordinance. It's not what I submitted or what I intended. The ordinance that you all see and have deleted the public request to be heard magically. But the correct ordinance did not do that. And we have a copy of the correct ordinance here at the council right now. A mistake was made. Thank you.
A new copy's on the table as well, outside.
Let me read the title of that ordinance. An ordinance to amend Section 2-30 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the city council's order of business to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance. Item 10B is ordinance number 3909. The title of which? Is ordinance number 3909, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 28, Article 7, Complete Streets, Sections 28-151 through 28-157 of the Bellevue City Code in its entirety as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance. Again, this ordinance will have public hearing on August 27. Item 10C is ordinance number 3910. The title of which? Oh, boy. Rich, do you remember what page the title was of the 86 pages that we have in this ordinance? Page nine, nine of 86. Okay, ordinance number 3910. An ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriations Bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date. Thank you, Sabrina. Again, this will have public hearing on the 27th. Item 10D is ordinance number 3911. Ordinance number 3911. An ordinance to amend Sections 5.22, 5.23, 5.24, and 5.26 of ordinance number 3619, Bellevue Zoning Ordinance relating to exercise, fitness, and tanning spas as a permitted use in the BG General Business Zoning District, B G M Metropolitan General Business Zoning District, B G H Heavy General Business Zoning District, and F X Flex Space Zoning District. To repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to provide for an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. Again, public hearing will be on August 27.
Item number 11, public hearing on matters other than ordinance. Item 11A?
Item 11A is a public hearing on the event license application of the Bellevue Offutt Kiwanis for Arrows to Aerospace Celebration on August 18, 2018 in Washington Park from 6:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and a parade on Mission Avenue.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so.
Anna Mayor, I'm Lloyd Dowding. I'm the president of the Bellevue Offutt Kiwanis Club, and I'm here to answer any questions and ask for your approval of our permit to hold our annual Arrows to Aerospace Celebration this weekend.
Are there any questions for Mr. Dowding? Sina, I want to thank you for the annual event, great parade.
We're going to have fun.
Always do. Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item, please do so. Thank you, Mr. Dowding. I see none. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve the event license application of the Bellevue Offutt Kiwanis for the Arrows to Aerospace Celebration on August 18, 2018, in Washington Park from 6:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and a parade on Mission Avenue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion, Mr. Manjimelli.
Just wanted to let the council know that the Bellevue Offutt Kiwanis Club has submitted the certificate of insurance for these events.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or statements, comments? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 11B is public hearing on the request from Midwest Fireworks Wholesalers for a fireworks display at the conclusion of the Bellevue East Homecoming Football Game on September 14, 2018.
I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so at this time.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Dr. Jeff Wagner, principal at Bellevue East High School. And I just wanted to come and ask again for your approval to have our fireworks display that we've had the last two years after our homecoming football game. It's the same company doing the same display. It's about a nine-minute display. Last year, we did a little bit better job notifying the public, social media. We bought some signs that we put up around the streets, and we did not have one complaint last year. And so it's an event that hopefully will become and continue to be a tradition and looking for your approval to continue with the third year. And I would entertain any questions or comments that you would have.
There any questions for Dr. Wagner? I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wagner. Appreciate it. Are there any others that would like to speak on this item? I see none. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Thomas Burns. Mr. Burns?
I move to approve the request from Midwest Fireworks Wholesalers for a firework display at the conclusion of the Bellevue East Homecoming Football Game on September 14, 2018.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12, resolutions, none. 13, current business.
Item 13A is the approval of the extension of the lease at 204 West Mission Avenue, Suite 1, with the United States Postal Service through December 31, 2018.
Mr. Burns?
I move to approve item 13A.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13B is approval to purchase radios for the new system to be used by the fire department. 21 portables, 15 mobiles, single head, 16 mobiles, dual heads, 11 single chargers, three multi-chargers, 19 speaker microphones, and 18 batteries for Motorola in the amount of $286,998.60.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 13B as just read.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions, Mr. Shannon?
Mr. Severson. Would you please address the council and explain to us how we went from being a million and a half overspend on this year's budget to three and a half million of free money to spend and pay for all these items on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, these, there's about five items on this agenda that equal about $830,000. For this year, every month, we relook at the forecast for the remainder of the year. And in the last month, we've scrutinized it. We've asked the Public Works Director to really look at the numbers hard, how much they're going to spend. We looked at any potential retirements in the police department, and we looked at bonding, any refundings that would have to be paid out. And from those, the latest forecast for our spending for the year is going to be $73,470 versus the appropriated $76,533. So we have had some trouble getting to a good budget for the next year. We've had some challenges. And it made some sense to go ahead and buy these in the current fiscal year, under the current appropriation, instead of burdening next year's budget with those. Now, it's still cash, but these are items that we talked to each and every one of the department heads, and these are needed items. They're going to be required either now or by the end of next year. So it had to be spent now or next year. As far as I know, nothing was frivolous. The radios are needed to be part of the system. Otherwise, they're not going to be talking to Douglas County and other Sarpy County officials.
Not questioning the expenditures on the agenda. Just want to make sure the council's all on the same page, that we do have money available now. The $5 million in bonds won't be repaid. So after tonight's spending, we'll have roughly $2.7 million left.
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Modri. Mr. Severson.
Not so quick.
I thought that was the cue to get out of here.
So the, about $823,000 tonight, not budgeted, that we want to, looking to approve. So that would add on to that $73,470?
Yes.
So that would make it?
Yes. We might find a couple other items as we, you know, get finished up with July. And so for that last month in September, sometimes departments have wishful thinking that they're going to get it spent.
Yeah.
But we'll look at that. Usually, the spending goes down instead of up in that last month, unless it's designed like this.
Right. Okay. Okay. Well, we'll talk the budget a little later, so I don't want to... Thank you.
All right. Well, and I wanted to go there anyway. So has the 19 budget been adjusted to remove this 830 for the radios and the other equipment?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. While you're up there, Mr. Severson. I wasn't clear, you mentioned refunding on the bonds.
Yes.
So we're not refunding and doing some bonding? Or did I misunderstand?
The appropriation is an expenditure appropriation. And in the budget, you show the expenditures separate from revenues. And yes, in a refunding, you're just refinancing. But for the appropriations, you have to gross each one of those up.
Okay. And then on these radios, I believe we were requested those radios sometime back. We budgeted and funded half of them, and they've been paid, I believe, as I recall. And so this is just completing the sale and allowing us to do it a little sooner than wait.
A month and a half early.
Yeah. Okay. That's, it's clear. Thank you.
Mr. Modri.
Well, I will ask follow-up then. Our projected or forecast revenue is about $4.8 million less than what we had put in the budget last year, right? So given that and this additional spending, then that'll put us about $3 million to the wrong side?
Yes.
Okay, so that's coming out of cash reserves?
We've been building up those cash reserves over a few years. And that's how it usually happens is the last couple of months of the year, that spending doesn't happen, but it's too late to amend the budget upward, you know? So what we've done is we have added to our cash over the years, and now we're going to use up some of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13C is approval to purchase seven mobile data computers, 16 Cradle Point data modems with five-year warranty, and nine docking stations. sixteen Cradle Point data modems with five-year warranty, and nine docking stations from DH Wireless and PCS Mobile in the total amount of $53,854.22.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 13C as just read.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13D is approval to purchase radios for the new system to be used by the Police Department. Seven portables, thirteen mobiles, single heads, six mobile motor unit mobiles, seven single chargers, seven speaker microphones, and seven batteries and flash kits for Motorola in the amount of $199,999.19.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 13D.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13E is approval to purchase 22 replacement cruiser and body-worn cameras from WatchGuard Video for the Police Department in the amount of $164,968.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item 13E.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the renewal of the simulator-maintenance agreement with Vertra in the amount of $12,520.50 to be allocated from the federal forfeiture funds.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I request that we approve item 13F as just read.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13G is the approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Option B proposal from Kenbrook Roofing, Inc. for the replacement of the Southwest Shop Salt Shed Roof in the amount of $117,260.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 13G.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13H, approval to replace Street Department equipment, being two trucks and a hydraulic breaker in the amount of $125,542.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve 13H.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13I, approval of change orders number one through five for the 2017 concrete project.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I make a motion. We approve 13I.
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number 14, Administration Report. Are there any questions for Mr. Mangiamelli? Mr. Sullivan.
Mayor, if you'll indulge me on the issue on making an emergency change to the agenda. I just want to read from a state Supreme Court that defines an emergency as "any event or occasional combination of circumstances which calls for immediate action or remedy, pressing necessity, exigency, a sudden or unexpected happening, an unforeseen occurrence, or condition." I believe based on the facts, my earlier opinion would say that amending that agenda for, to do a reconsideration wouldn't fall into that definition. I'd just ask the council in the future that if you're going to do something somewhat unusual from our normal meetings, that you call me ahead of time, and I can give more effective and timely advice at the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions for Ms. Mangiamelli on the Administration Report? Moving on to item number 15, Public Request to Be Heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statements made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city official, employees, or member of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is elected official, city official, or employer, member of the general public, and City Code Section 2-68 regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted inside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
Good evening. Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. First thing I want to do is give a good shout-out to the Parks Department. They do a great job at Jewel Park for the dog park there. I've been talking about having a dog park in southwest Bellevue for a number of years now, I believe, and we should have one there. I see Omaha's having a dog park in Turner Park. It's got astro turf on it. It's going to be interesting to see how that one works out. We have people from Omaha come down here now because there isn't a dog park in that area. Also, I see that Alcorn is having a private dog facility. It's supposed to be the largest in the country, I believe. And so obviously, there's a need to have dogs. I want to thank Councilman Cook for coming and talking to me after the meeting when I said that that we need one in southwest Bellevue, and what he, he said they've been looking, but they can't find an area that's flat. Well, we can all go all the way back to when Dave Sandmore was in the city council and complained about all the ditch parks. We had the SID attorneys and the contract builders. What they did, they took all the land up. I mean, that was a mistake, and we know it, and they know it. Dave Sandmore knew it. And yet, we didn't get the parks, the flat area we wanted now, so that's part of our problem with that one. The, I, we do need a dog park down there, and I think the community benefit money can be used for that. I'm hoping, I've heard the word that the aerial is going to be bought with the community benefit money. I hope that's not true, because that's not what I believe the key, community benefit money should be used for. We need the state authority to come down here. I've been saying that for a long time, too. My website is chuckfrederick.com. The other thing that happened was that Mr. Shannon, Councilman Shannon, came down and talked to me afterwards in regard to the block grant writer, and what the difference is, we're not comparing apples and apples when we, we talk about having somebody from California come here and just do that job. Most cities, when they have block grant writer, it does, they're employed by the city and do multiple other tasks. So it isn't like we have to hire one person to do the, to do the block grant writing. And I believe we had one, we still may have a person on this employed by the city who did block grant writing in the past. I think it's really a waste of our money to have somebody from, from California come here all the time. That's, that's unfortunate. The other thing, too, is that Mr. Shannon talked about emergency. I don't think, I think that was the wrong word to use, and that kind of got things turned around. It was, it stated that Mr. Modri had the right to do this, and he could have done it, maybe he could do it next time now, according to what I've read, I've understood, but he had the right to, to put this on the men, on the agenda this time, because he did vote for the, for the aerial, so a little confusing there. Another thing on that special meeting last week, there was, they wanted Mr. Modri asked to have public requests, to have public input, and there was a vote, and four voted for input and two voted against it. I won't say who they were, but I don't understand why anybody would vote against having somebody come up and give their opinion on what should be done. We're, we're part of the, we're both a public, we're the taxpayers. We deserve to be heard, and if you want to know who they are, all you have to do is look in the minutes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Preister.
Mr. Sullivan, since it is on, since it is on the, the budget is on the agenda. For clarification, could I ask Mr. Severson to say where the budget money is coming from for the aerial truck? There's confusion after the comment, and I just want to make sure people understand.
I would suggest that if we want to discuss that, we make that an item, agenda item at the next meeting, as opposed to breaking the typical requirement that we're not to respond to public requests to be heard. And I think we should probably do that only when it is of utmost necessity. But you can certainly still proceed if you choose.
Thank you.
Are there others?
Good afternoon. I'm Don Gifford, President of Local 4906. First, I'd like to thank you guys for purchasing that aerial apparatus last week for us. It's greatly appreciated and greatly needed. I want to talk about something that's my understanding. On this current budget, you want us to reduce to a three-man crew on our rigs. I have a study here I pulled up, and it's a landmark study studying residential fires, showing how crew size and arrival time influence saving lives and property. This study was issued by the U.S. Department of Commerce, National Institute of Standards Technology, ESTA. It shows that crew size does matter in effectively fighting a fire. A crew of four completing 22 essential firefighting tasks were able to do it 25% faster than a crew of three. That same crew of four is able to put water on the fire 6% faster than a crew of three, which helps reduce property damage and lowers dangers to the firefighters and occupants. Fire risk grows exponentially. Each minute delay is crucial to the safety of occupants and firefighters, and directly relates to property damage. A four-person crew is able to complete search 5% faster than a three-person crew. The study that they, when they did this, they explored what the majority of the fires were, and they found that majority of the fatal fires are residential buildings. So this study went out and constructed a two-story, 2,000-square-foot facility in accordance with NFPA 1710. The facility was constructed at the Montgomery County Public Safety Training Site, and they used fire crews from that area to do this. And there was another study that went further into that study. They looked at that a fourth person gives a firefighter, the fourth person on the rig gives the frightened firefighters a greater flexibility to operate if their backups are stuck in traffic. And so they, they can operate efficiently with, while they're waiting for that other crew to come. A fourth person can finish the job and go back to the station 25% faster than a three-man crew. Working in smaller crews is harder on the firefighter's health. Their maximum heart rates were higher and stayed higher after each call when they served on a three-person crew. And just letting you know, heart attacks are the leading cause of line-of-duty death in this profession.
Mayor, council members, Joji Bolisco, 211 West 22nd Avenue, Bellevue Fire Department. I would also like to thank you so much for the approval of the aerial apparatus. We've been out with one for over a year now, and the one that you're purchasing is the correct apparatus, and we thank you very much for that. We'd also like to thank you for the contract negotiations, when in Article 38, under the minimum staffing, that we mutually agreed that the goal of the Bellevue Fire Department would be set forth to achieve NFPA 1710 standards. And let's talk about it a little bit. It's, it's our job as firefighters to explain to you what's important, why it's important, and then to see if we can get buy-in from the stakeholders, you, the elected officials. And that's what we're going to do a little bit tonight, but then we're going to call on each of one of you over the next couple of weeks, and give you our points of view, and why we think it's important, and try to win you over. And I think we may have an ability to do that. But first, I'd like to talk about NFPA. Some of you may not know what that is, and most people in the audience wouldn't either. The National Fire Protection Association is an international organization that establishes guidelines which are nationally recognized and followed by fire departments. This organization is comprised of more than 80 national trade and professional organizations which provide input towards the development of fire industry guidelines. I was a former fire investigator in the city of Omaha, investigating, you know, dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, of fires. And one of the things that I learned early on is that the quicker that you can get there, the better that you have to make a difference. And to do that, you better get there within four or five minutes, so you can contain the fire to the room of origin. Over the last eight years, you know, we've done a pretty good job of that, especially over the last four years, since you've approved the SAFER grants. We've stopped a lot of fires in the area, or at least room of origin. Now, there's a chart here that I, we'll go over with it later with you as well. But what it talks about is down here is the minutes, one to 16 minutes, and then it talks about property destruction in percentages from zero to 100%. At eight minutes, and this is in NFPA standards, in the standards, it's done with studies, so it's nothing that we've made up. At eight minutes, you'll have a 50% destruction, and then it goes, the fire will go on to leave the room of origin. And then we'll also get superheated gases, and we'll get some flame over, and that's where it really gets dangerous. You get around that, you know, six to 10-minute mark in there, is when firefighters are still in there. The gases heat up, it's burning, couches are going, you know, a lot of flammable, so it gets really hot, and you'll get a flashover, and that's when firefighters can get, can get injured. So we'll go over that with you later on. One of the other items in the NFPA 1710 standard is why do we need 14 or 15 people at a full fire alarm? It's one of the things that NFPA requires, that you have, if you're using an aerial, 15 firefighters there in nine minutes and 20 seconds. The first arriving crew needs to arrive there in, I believe it is, five minutes and 20 seconds to initiate a fire attack. And this is the breakdown of why we need four people in our fire trucks. We have one incident commander, one pump operator, that'll be the first person in, two firefighters on the initial attack line. So these two firefighters get off, go in with the hose line. We also need two firefighters with the backup lines. We also need one firefighter for attack line support, and one firefighter for the backup line support. When you get off the fire truck, the, one of the firefighters gets off, makes the hydrant, ties it. Fire truck goes up the hill, driver gets out, prepares to get water to that hose line, and then the captain and the other firefighter can make entry into the house, maybe do a search and rescue, do a fire attack. You're not going to get that done with three people, because the captain's not going to be able to go in there alone, he's not going to be able to... be able to go in there alone, he's not going to be able to pull that hose off, he's not going to be able to flake it in, is what we call it, is when we get on scene. So after that, one firefighter has made the hydrant, he gets up to the fire scene, and what they'll do is the two firefighters will have already gone in, and then he can start flaking the hose in, helping it get the hose in so they can get into where, it may be in a basement, in an attic area, or something along that. After that, you need two firefighters for search and rescue, two firefighters for ventilation, two firefighters to serve as RIC teams, rescue intervention crews. So if somebody goes down, you have somebody on the outside. That's also an OSHA two-in-two-out rule. So you need people on the outside ready to go in case someone goes down. And also, you'll need an aerial driver, and that will be 15 firefighters. And that's what we need. You have four stations, three engine companies. We're going to have a truck company coming. Right now, we're using three or four engine companies, four on each will give us the ability to adequately fight those fires. Other measures are in the NFPA states clearly that if you have either a pump or a truck, these companies shall be staffed with a minimum of four firefighters.
Mr. Gibleisco, I hate to cut you off. You've passed the five-minute, and I need to keep it to five minutes. If you want to address the council on their individual meetings.
On what?
The individual meetings that you'd like to set up with the council members.
Yeah, I'll take that up later.
Okay.
Just one quick item, and I know I'm over the time limit. The SAFER, the SAFER grant, you know, we signed a commitment, Dan Burlett sent in a letter with the approval of this city council, that we were going to follow through with the SAFER grant, and I do believe, being the writer of that grant, we are going to jeopardize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others?
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. My name is Anthony Rogers. I'm also 211 West 22nd Avenue. I'm one of the firefighter paramedics that works within the city, and I just wanted to explain the importance of having four-person rigs with regard to EMS. And our primary mission is life safety, life safety of both our patients, the citizens of Bellevue, and our fellow firefighters. And something that we do that is becoming a national standard, because a lot of our EMS work is cutting-edge that we do here in Bellevue, one of the things that we do that's becoming national standard is what's called pit crew CPR, which, if you can imagine, I'm not a racing person, but I know that in that pit crew, each person has a specific job. In order to be efficient and effective with the task that they're accomplishing, each person is skilled at that particular job. The person that puts on the tire knows that tire inside out, they know how many turns it takes to make it happen. All of those individuals have a particular job. The same thing is true on an EMS call. An engine company with four individuals can, has certain responsibilities depending on where that person is seated in the apparatus. They can be grabbing information, actually performing some of the interventions that need to be done in a very timely manner. For instance, in some of the trade magazines for EMS, particularly JIMs, has several articles, one about two years ago, that explains the importance of efficient, high-quality CPR, which is something that takes place when you have a pit crew team that works together, just like any other specialized team. Also, the Journal of the American Heart Association, that's something that is being taught to providers, both new providers and refreshing older providers, the importance of being able to be effective on a fire scene or on an EMS run with each person having a specific assignment. That efficiency goes down when a person has to double up on an assignment. For stroke patients, for instance, stroke patients, we have a very limited amount of time in order, from the time of the event to the time of intervention. We have, in some cases, less than four hours to get all of our procedures done, get this person to the highest level of care. Sometimes, as a local hospital, sometimes we have to go 10 or 15 minutes outside of our regular response area. And having that four-person engine crew who makes the scene, they're out the door in less than 60 seconds, they're usually on scene in a couple of minutes, they are critical in making an advance on that person's symptoms so that we can get them to the hospital and have the best outcome. And then one other thing that I wanted to mention to you today also is crew safety. In many cases, a resuscitation or a rescue requires a person to be moved. The more people that you have to move a patient, the safer it is for that patient, and it's also safer for our providers. Our providers, one of the leading causes of injuries to firefighters, other than heart attacks, is very closely related to back injuries, which is very costly to municipalities, as we all know. It's also costly to that provider. So we just wanted to make sure that everyone understood exactly how important it is to have four personnel on an EMS run.
Thank you. Are there others?
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Luke Glessinger. I am the vice president of the BPFA, and we represent the part-time personnel on the fire department. I'm not going to continue to beat a dead horse, but I think Local 4906 has been able to illustrate the need and the objective of the fire department with having four-man rigs. The staffing is appropriate for our needs and for the taxpayers and citizens of Bellevue. But one thing I would like to reference is the contract that this council has approved with us. If you go down to Article 24, it states, "The goal of the Bellevue Fire Department and the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association is to meet nationally recognized fire service safe staffing levels for all in-service engine and truck companies. The parties agree to work collaboratively to attain the goal during the life of this agreement through monitoring of staffing levels and response times to track the department's performance and relation to the standards set forth in NFPA 1710." Chief Gibleisco has already illustrated what 1710 states and that association and what they do. And I think that we should probably reconsider running three-man engines so our taxpayers of this city aren't the ones being left out to dry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Wagner. I'm a battalion chief with the Bellevue Fire Department, member of Local 4906, and a lifelong resident of Bellevue. I'm not going to belabor the points that my coworkers have already made with you. I'll just tell you that I've been a firefighter for 35 years, a chief officer for the last 18. I've functioned in just about every capacity that you can function in, on the fire ground and as a fire command officer. Operating this department with only three-man rigs leaves us one sick call away from shutting an apparatus down. When you shut an apparatus down, you leave a district completely naked. And I'd like to relate a story, that shortly after I began with the Bellevue Fire Department, we were short-staffed and had a district vacant. We had no protection, no coverage. I got off shift that morning, and I kept my radio on because I was concerned. About 10 o'clock in the morning, a call came in for a fire down in Green Acres. Police on-site sighted smoke and flames on approach. I immediately got in my vehicle because the crew that was coming was coming from another district. The battalion chief was making his rounds, and he was also coming from another district. I happened to be first on scene. I established command, did a 360 of the structure, and was told by a police officer that there was some man that was trapped inside. He had attempted to make entry and was pushed back by the smoke. I, having been a firefighter for, at that time, only 27 years, I was able to recognize that there was about this much air on the ground of that house. I hit my belly and began a right-arm search. I searched the living room, kitchen, dining rooms areas of that structure. I was unable to continue because every 90 seconds, as you heard before, this fire doubles in size. At that point, the fire became untenable to me because I wasn't a turnout gear, I was in gym shorts because I'd come from the gym, but I wanted to try and make an attempt to save this individual's life. Unfortunately, I was not. I was pushed out of the structure. The first responding unit got there, I gave him my report as to what I had found and told him where I thought he might possibly be, since I had searched the whole north end of this double-wide trailer, and that, in fact, is where they found him, down in his bedroom hallway. If we fail to recognize the reason that we are here today as a paid professional fire department, we're doomed to continue to repeat the mistakes of the past. Thank you.
Are there others?
Steve Betts, Assistant Chief for Bellevue Fire. I just want to talk about another subject. Fortunately or unfortunately, I've been here for 45 years. Forty-five. When I started the Pittman snorkel in 1967, was six years old, the one that was refurbished in 1999. We walked door-to-door in 1991 because frankly, we were driving junk and our buildings were falling apart. And the city told us, if we went out there and we got a bond, that they would help us buy equipment if we helped fix the stations. So there was two bonds, one was a GEO bond, and one was a Vote of the People bond, which did pass. And they told us that they wouldn't kick the can down the road anymore, that would be on a rotational basis. And I find it almost ironic that here I sat, 45 years later, but from 1991, that we purchased this equipment, that I wrote most of the specs for, along with Don Gifford and many other volunteers, and I think you should thank them, because they bought some of the best equipment you could buy. You get what you pay for. Most equipment would not be in functioning today if it hadn't been bought and purchased the way we purchased and inspected, and we didn't buy some people's equipment. What I also find ironic is the wealth of knowledge that's at that station that nobody taps into. I'm there almost every day. If you want to ask a question, I'm not going to lie to you. I've never lied to you. I'll tell you the truth the best I know. If you want to check my resources, that's fine. But find someone that's dedicated 45 years of their life to the citizens, because my whole life here is about one thing. What can I do for the citizens of Bellevue? I've sacrificed a lot, and that's okay. I've gained a lot of knowledge, and I've learned a lot. I mean, life for me has been, I never traded for the world. It's public service. I don't care if you're police fire or even the public works that plow the streets, because I did that, too. You're servicing the people. That's what we should always remember here. It's not about he said, she said, or we need this, or we need that. If you don't trust myself, you don't trust the chief, ask us the questions so that when you go ask those questions, you look intelligent. There's people that call me because I've been here 45 years and ask why these questions are being asked. I don't have a clue that you're asking them. I'm open at any time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there others? Thank you. I'll move on to item number 16, closed session. Mr. Burns.
I move that the city council go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be real estate negotiations and issues at 17th Avenue and Jefferson, also 16B, real estate negotiations relating to an easement release at 25th and Coffee Avenue. The following individuals will be included in closed session. Real estate negotiations. Oh, Mayor, City Council, Joe Manjumeli, Pat Sullivan, Jeff Roberts, and Chris Schuchek are asked to participate.
Need to add Tim Buckley.
And the police chief.
Is this, are, that's accurate?
Yeah, we want the police chief.
Chief Stuckenholtz as well.
And Chief Stuckenholtz.
Thank you. We have a motion. I need a second. Second by Mr. Shannon. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
Just do a roll call vote because it's for not letting her do that, so. Mr. Hanson? Mr. Cook? Mr. Shannon? Mr. Preister? Mr. Burns? Mr. Mudry? All voted yes.
Thank you. The city council has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject matter will be discussed in closed session. One, real estate negotiation issues at 17th Avenue and Jefferson, real estate negotiations relating to the easement release at 25th and Coffee. Two, in addition to the mayor, the city council, Joe Manjumeli, Patrick Sullivan, Jeff Roberts, and Chris Schuchek are asked, and Mr. Buckley, and Mr. Chief Stuckenholtz.